Hey, good evening, everybody. Chris Hughes here, NC Prep. So we got a full house tonight. So I don't want to waste a lot of time and get some of these coaches in and out. And I know I sent a lot of, there's a lot of invitations to coaches that are around the state that are trying to get in. Due to the limitations of this platform here at Stream yard, I can only get 10 on at a time. So I'm going to go ahead and get these guys in here to start the deal. Gentlemen, appreciate y'all coming on here Thursday night. We got a lot of news that came down the pipe from the North Carolina High School Athletics Association Board of Directors with the realignment and stuff that came out. And I know that coaches have been buzzing my phone all day. And as I know each and every one of your phones has been going as well. So we will try to get you heard. To those of you who are just tuning in, obviously, the State Athletic Association released kind of in two parts last week, the fact that we're going back to full classifications, 25% evenly distance with a few different factors in addition to the traditional ADMs. And then today, we got the conferences that came out. So guys, we want to try to get your coaches, if you're not the one speaking, maybe mute your mics so we can kind of cut down on some of the background noise. I know most of you guys have. I'm just going to kind of go with the old guy first. I hate to single you out. Coach Stone, you're the elder of this bunch and used to be my boss as well. So going to kind of give you the first shake out of it. If you want to share some thoughts on, you know, your thoughts of the realignment and maybe how you felt, maybe some changes you'd like to see.
Um, well, actually, it really worked out much better for us than Hickory. So selfishly, you know, it's a good deal. But we're getting back into the same problem that caused us to go to split classifications. And I, you know, I was talking to Coach Law a few minutes ago. You know, starting next fall, his school of 1300 will have to beat Myers Park with almost 3,900 kids for a 4A state title. And you know, something, something's a little strange about that. But you know, when you and I were together in Fayetteville, we were, we were 4A and we went to the state title game and had everybody back and we moved down to 3A. And that was not any easier. The other thing that I'd like to say since I've been around here since Division II playoffs started, this whole deal about playoffs being more inclusive. I've been part of a 2A championship that was not split and part of a big 3A that was split. And the community and the town loved them. It was great publicity for us all. Everybody, you know, certainly felt like they were state champs. I didn't feel like having eight of them was a big deal to me. I thought the state has grown so much and there's so many more high schools around here that, you know, that was probably a pretty good thing to go. And we'd kind of gotten used to it. But I know what's going on. They're trying to reduce travel right here a little bit. And I think everybody's a little on the edge because COVID has been so hard to deal with. So, you know, we'll see what comes off of it. But I see a lot of schools challenging and trying to, trying to move down a little bit, especially, you know, the larger, the larger numbers of, larger numbers of 3A will be okay. It's really just the 4A split that's so wide and ridiculous right now.
Coach, one of the things that I'm an advocate of, and you know, you and I spent that summer of 2007, which was one for the record books in terms of just insane heat in Fayetteville. But you know, I've been an advocate for trying to get the season pushed back a week. So we did accomplish that. But what are your thoughts of the potential of doing, and this is again for you, Coach Stone, of doing 10 games in 10 weeks with that ninth game, or if you play a 10th game and being an endowment game?
Hey, man, don't take games away. If you want to cancel some practice time, I'm okay with there. But I, you know, we all love to coach games. Our kids love to play games. It's the way we grow the sport. So, you know, I don't, shoot, I'm going to have some kids and I know Coach Willard's got some kids that have just finished playing football and they'll be here to play in February. Young, young, young people can do that. You know, it's, it's not that big a deal to me. I just, you know, when we were in at Bird in Fayetteville, what we were able to do was Ms. Warner gave us a football only class. It was fifth period. So we could have everybody out there and it allowed us to catch up and give a lot of instruction in a hurry. And so we were really able to build that program very quickly because she did that for us. So, you know, kids don't get to play enough football. I mean, they play other sports. They play a bunch of them. Lord knows they play basketball and baseball. But you know, it's, it's, it's hard for kids to get enough on field experience. There are, there are a few travel leagues and there's a few men in every area. In fact, I see Coach Bruington trying to grow the sport through youth football. And we all got, you know, that's, that's the way to roll with it. You know, I'm 65. I figure I got 20 more years. So you guys got to learn how to do this stuff, man.
Yeah, Coach Will.
Go ahead.
Well, no, I was going to shift gears and kind of, we'll go over to Coach Willard here in Forsyth County, because I know he's got some, some opinions about this as well. And Coach Willard, you know, coming off back to back state championships, and you've been in the state as a coach about 20 years, and you came from a couple other states in the college ranks as well. Just thought we'd kind of get your, your thoughts on this, Coach.
Well, I think at the end of the day, my biggest thought is that we're cheating kids, to be honest. I really feel that's the biggest problem. I think Coach Stone said something in the fact that the communities love it. You take away an experience from communities and schools and all that, and that's a disappointing thing. My biggest thing, what I'm saying is, I agree with these basketball coaches that they say that they're the ones complaining, or the baseball or softball. I agree. I think their league should be split too. I think they should have more than four state titles or champions also. So, and from the coaches I talked to from basketball, baseball, softball, they didn't want us to go backwards. They kind of wanted us to move forward. And then you look at this realignment and I talked with Coach Law, I mean, that's just wrong. I don't care what anybody says. If you have more numbers to pick from, you're going to be a better program. Or over the long time, you have, it just makes it too hard for someone like Shane, every week, you know, to try to compete with certain schools that have way more student body people to pick from. And that goes for all the sports, basketball, all of them. I think that's wrong for all sports. And that's what I want to get across, is I'm here to fight for all the sports, not just football.
Hey Shane, you are one of the smallest in the 4A ranks now in moving up. Just thought, you know, he brought up your program as well. Just kind of wanted to give you an opportunity to chime in here, being in the western part of the state, but still playing predominantly against city schools.
Well, I mean, it's going to present a whole new challenge for us. We have been fortunate and things have gone well for us football wise. But, you know, we're, our enrollment's just under 1,300 kids. And with us being 4A, you know, we're being asked, or you know, we're going to have to beat teams with over 3,500 students to, to win another state championship. And, you know, if that's what we got to do, that's what we got to do. And we're going to figure it out. But, you know, in particular, a game like football, the physical nature of the game, having, having 35 or 3,600 students to pull from compared to 1,300 means a lot. And it's, you know, I understand that, that we had a chance to vote on this earlier in the fall and, and, you know, participation wasn't quite what it needed to be to get us into a situation where we could be five or go to a five or six, 6A classification. You know, it's, it's my opinion, and this is just a football coach's opinion, you know, we're, we're at the point now where now superintendents and principals and coaches and everybody has had a chance to see how this whole thing was going to shake out. And now we know the details of what's going on. You know, let us vote again. Give us another opportunity to vote. Because just like some of these other coaches have already said, four's not enough. Four's not, and if, and if eight was too many, fine, but, but four's not enough. And, and I, and I agree with Coach Willard. Why, you know, if football could have eight state champions, why couldn't softball? You know, that's, but, but you know, I guess that 1,300 kids, I've got 1,300 kids up here on the mountain and we're going to have to go to Charlotte to, you know, to play somebody that's got 35 or 36. I don't care how you look at it, you know, when you look at that on paper, that's, that's just not right.
And I think, Chris, the thing that Shane just hit on, I hope the key thing is, we can all come together. And I'm talking from the High School Association, the football coaches, basketball, and re-vote and do this right. Because if we set this in stone for the next two or four years, we've cheated out a lot of communities, a lot of parents and a lot of kids. So I hope, my biggest thing is that they will re-vote. And this is a major decision that affects the whole state of North Carolina. So that's my endgame in all of this, Chris.
Agreed. And I'm going to bring another guy to the screen, coaches. And everybody else, I see you in there. And I know we got a lot of coaches trying to access the studio. So keep trying. We can keep ten in here at a time. In fact, my co-host, Mr. Dean King, is trying to get on as well. So hopefully we can get Dean on here. I'm going to bring Coach David Gentry, head coach at Murphy. And Coach Gentry, you were also on the NCHSA board just a couple of years ago. And I know you've got some strong opinions about this. And kind of being the dean of coaches in the state and having about as much experience and knowledge about this as anyone, I'm really anxious to get your opinion of this, Coach.
Back in, when it was 1A, 1 double A, they were looking at a lot of the 4A in the 1A. You know, there's so much discrepancy of being of the numbers, like Shane said, between 4A, you got three times the number of students you got, that you got to compete with. And in 1A, it's, it's about the same thing. It's about two and a half times to three times. And I don't mind 2A and 3A. You've got less than, a lesser amount of kids to go. And I don't mind the baseball, softball, and everything else. I just think we, we missed the boat there in the spring when our administrators didn't vote for, let us have more than 4As. And that would eliminate some of this problem that we're looking at today. If we'd gone 5A, 6A, then it would have been, then we could, we could, we could eliminate this. We wouldn't have to go 1, 1A, 1A, double A. So it's about numbers is what it is. And now all the coaches over here, I mean, Coach Willard and Coach Shane Law, it's about numbers. How many, how many people have I got to compete with? And I don't know what ISP has to do with athletic ability, but I don't think it has much to do with it. I've looked at it. I've looked at it. I have been on the board, but I guarantee if I was on the board, that'd been hard for me to swallow. But I just think that we need to do something to level the playing field. If, in football and basketball, and I understand, and I talk to some people, and I think the reason why they went to football, Shane, was that you had to have 22 starts. If you got 22 stars on, on a team, and basketball has five, and baseball has nine, and soccer now has 11, and 11 is the most, you can, it's easy for you to compete. It's easy for you to compete, even if you don't have probably the number. But I don't mind, Coach Willard, for us to go 1A, 1 double A in all, all aspects. And that would be a fairer way to do it than what we're doing right now.
Coach Gentry, I wanted to ask you this question because obviously you have served on the State Athletic Association Board, and you've been in education and in administration for probably as long as many of us has been alive.
More than probably you have been alive, yeah.
So we obviously respect that knowledge you bring to the table. What do you think of someone who's been on this board, Coach, that a recourse can be? Is it as easy as a school putting forth a motion to vote on these bylaws again? Or what recourse could be done to try to get some changes done to this?
I, you know, I don't, I don't know that. I've been on the board. It's, once they put that December meeting and they go for it, it's almost impossible unless we get a big uprising and they'll re-meet and re-adjust. But it'd be hard for us. But we need to let our voice, you know, heard and say that we don't like this. Because, you know, you go in other states, and I'm, I'm close to Tennessee and Georgia, and some of you might be close to South Carolina. But, you know, we live in a different world. You know, we, 22 miles from us, it's a different world. You know, they've already, Tennessee's already crowned six state championships in, in football, and Georgia's in the, in the quarterfinals. And we're weak. We're not even playing. And I, I, you know, I don't know where it's political. I think it is political. But we need to get a hold of this state here. I'm getting off, off train here. But I think we can make a, if, if we make a loud enough noise, we could, we could be heard.
And, and I'm glad you brought up the political part of it, Coach Gentry. Is this something that, that the state legislature or people from that side, is that the kind of noise that needs to be made? Or is it just the body of coaches, the LEAs, the different school boards, et cetera?
I think that would help. I think that would help. We had a chance in November to change the, change the Democratic governor down there, and we didn't do it. And I think if we had done that, it'd been, it'd been a little bit different story coming into what we're doing right now.
Well, gentlemen, I want, I want to kind of give a few of you other guys a chance to speak. I want to go down to Coach Privet, because he was in the 1A championship this past year. And I'm, I'm very anxious to get some of the smaller schools' opinion, because, you know, kind of like the 4A has a huge disparity of numbers, the 1A is, is certainly a wide range from top to bottom. And Coach Privet, you've been around the state a long time, and you know what it's like to be at a much smaller school, as does Coach Gentry. I want to get your thoughts.
Yeah, it's very much different for us down here with having smaller numbers to choose from. I hear guys talking about 3,500 and 1,300, but we have 200 in the school and over at the early college, another 90 or 80 or so. So it's very difficult to pool teams. And, and you know, when we consolidated in 2012, those first three or four years, I was back and forth. I'd be one, I'd be double A the first year. I think the first year, we consolidated, I ran into Southwest Oslo, who went on to win the state championship. Then I went down to 1A the next year and lost to Pembroke. And we went back double A and lost to Princeton. And then we've been small 1A ever since then. But just being on that line of going back and forth is, is difficult. And then having those numbers to choose from there with so many small schools right here in our area. You have Kip, 600 yards from us right across the street, named Weldon right up the road. Next door to us, we have Roanoke Rapids, the only two-way school that's the closest to us. Southeast Halifax, Northwest Halifax, Rock Mountain Preps on our conference, North Edge County, we played in the Eastern State Championship too. Make it to the state championship, who's in our conference. We're very much demographically, we're, we're almost identical. So they write up in the, in the paper about the poverty level in both counties. So it's very difficult for us. And for us, the biggest thing we have to deal with, like they said, everyone's saying about the vote, not only this vote, but if you can go back a few years ago, many of the bigger schools with 2As, 3As, the 4As, don't get affected with the charters and things like that nature that we got affected with it, when principals didn't vote and allowed them to play with us. So that hurts us too. Well, it hadn't really, I think football's coming around to some of the new charter schools that are getting good in football. But as far as basketball and baseball, other sports, I think a lot of the 1As suffer for the charters coming in and then being able to pick up kids from all over the county. And that's what really hurts us is, is they can come in and, I mean, you're over in another county, two counties over, and you're picking up everyone from four or five counties in the area and can make a super team. And it's kind of hurt 1A a whole lot.
Yeah. No, I agree with that. And I want to go from you, and I want to bring on Coach Lamont Robinson, who is at Webb High School in Oxford. And Coach, you've been at a few small schools. I knew you were at South Granville. So you've been at some smaller schools and you two have seen how the numbers can affect competition. And granted, when you was at South Granville, you guys were really good. But, you know, you're at a part of the state where I think there's a lot of travel and, and you know, there's the numbers and, and just the downward trend, and it seems like to be the population. I wanted to get your take on how this is affecting you guys, Coach.
Yes, sir. You're absolutely right about being in a, in an area that you can, you can go between 1A and 3A. It was interesting when the first projections of realignment came out, and South Granville was a 3A school. And I was extremely surprised at that when we saw it. And I, I think everybody's trying to figure out this new formula for doing realignment. When they redid it, and then South Granville came back to 2A, it was like, okay, now where is everybody else going to go? You know, kind of being not too far from Durham, but then also, you know, not far from Warren County. Like I said, it's, you could kind of run the gambit there. One of the interesting schools that I saw that was in the conference that I never would have saw coming was Southern Durham being a part of that conference. And they, they put out that it was going to probably be a lot of split conferences. And I kind of figured we would have a split conference, but I never thought that Southern Durham would be a part of that conference now.
No, I agree. And now I want to also bring on a couple 4A coaches. Coach Samick, Coach Bruington at Southview, and Coach Buck at Sanderson High School. Because we've talked to some of the small school coaches, we've seen, we've heard from Coach Gentry in the Far West, who's in a 1A, probably going up to 2A, when I know they're doing a consolidation with the school here in a couple years. But you, you know, you guys are in the 4A, and there's a huge swing of numbers from top to bottom in the 4A as well. And Coach Samick, since you're on the top row with me, I'll start with you, and then we'll kind of pass it over to Coach Brew and Coach Buck. But interested to get your take on this, Coach.
Sure. Looking at what they're doing, and I understand what the formula, or like, I can understand the back or the thought process of the formula they're trying to do. But, you know, I'm not going to talk about when I was at Rosewood. But when I was at Parkland, we were probably the worst 4A team in the state, a title one school, didn't have any money, didn't have anything else. I would have like jumped on board with it and said, hey, well, this may give us an opportunity to drop down and play. Well, my thing is this, if you're going to do what they're doing and to talk about equity, why do you have so many split conferences? That is like totally, you know, contradicts what they were talking about. So I don't like, being, we're at Rosewood, we have 2,400 kids, we're going to be in the biggest classification, no matter what. It doesn't matter. But all these split classes. So if you're talking about equity, why are you talking about these split classes? Now, this actually could go back down to the 1A and 2A schools. Somebody brought up charter schools. Well, we want to talk political. Well, here's the other side of the aisle. In a lot of states, your private and charter schools actually have a, a factor where they have a multiplier factor, because they don't have guidelines, or they don't have school lines or district lines or anything like that. I don't think that there's any way in North Carolina that you can just come out and say, well, hey, we're going to give Charlotte Catholic a multiplier, or we're going to give URA Charter a multiplier because they don't have, they don't have district lines. So I just don't understand what they, what they said they were trying to do, or wanted to do. If you look at what they've done, it only contradicts everything that they were talking about. That's, that's very confusing to me on how they set this up. Realistically, who we play is who we're going to play. We're in Raleigh, we're going to probably play Raleigh schools. You know, we have a couple Johnson County schools and, and Durham County schools that border us. But it is what it is. But looking at what they did their first draft, it doesn't make any sense to me.
Coach Bruington, I will pass the baton to you. And not only your thoughts on the realignment, but also, there's about three conferences there in that Fayetteville area, within the Richmond, Fayetteville, Lee County, Harnett County, that have some jumbled up teams. And, and you know, there's really no rhyme or reason, it looks like, to the way some of these teams were put in this conference realignment. And I'm really anxious to get your take on this, Coach.
Thank you so much. Well, I'll, I'll start backwards and I'll, I'll start letting go backwards. But as far as our conferences, you figure right now, the new conference that we were just placed in, it's Southview, it's Southview, 71st, Cape Fear, Douglas Bird, then we go Jack Britt, Grace Creek as the conferences. And then split, and I'm going off the top of my head, there you go, great. So if you go down to Conference, yeah, let's go down, Coach, we're, okay, there we go, Conference 23. So if you look at right now, and Coach, I kind of see what they did, not that I agree with it, but if you look at it geographically, Jack Britt, Southview, and Grace Creek are all within five miles of each other. And then when you look at Purnell Sweat and Lumberton, those two Robinson County schools touch Cumberland County. And then you got 71st, Cape Fear, and Douglas Bird. Well, Douglas Bird will be the, the highest school north, with Cape Fear being the further school east. But now, if you look at Conference 23, if you can put that back up there, Coach, real quick, if you go look at the next conferences, you got Overheals and Pine Forest and E.E. Smith, who were pre, and Terry Sanford, who were all previously in our conferences. And all of those are basically in the, closer to Fort Bragg, and they're closer to the Harnett County area. So if you look at our particular conferences, we're not even playing traditional schools that we would normally play. So we have two split conferences. And I, and I realized when it came to our conferences, if they tried to group all the 3A schools, you would have nine teams, which would eliminate the endowment game. And then if you did the 4A schools, you would have a total of eight. So, you know, and then you go down to Hope County, Pinecrest, and Richmond, where Lumberton and those guys came from. I just think they did it geographically. And that's why they have all of these 3A conferences, all of these split conferences. But going back to what Shane said, and as well as Samick, you know, every year, every football coach in the state of North Carolina, every coach in the United States, you know, they just want a chance. You know, they, they sell their team on working hard in a weight room. They sell their teams on keeping their grades up and being eligible. And I think for any high school coach, any community, any team, you just want to feel like every year, you have an equitable chance. Now, and that's year in and year out. You know, I, I think, you know, we, we've played Richmond County before, we've played them tight before. We've played several of these teams that are much larger than we are before. But year in and year out, when you're having to play two or three kids both ways, and they're able to, you know, to platoon, eventually it catches up with you. And if you're doing that, you know, each round of the playoffs, you know, back to Shane's point, it's really going to catch up with you. And, you know, I, I don't believe there's anything wrong at all with split classifications when it comes to the state championships. Because when you think about it, from the, from the bigger aspect of saving the sport of football and growing the sport of football, the more teams that have an, an opportunity to play to the last week of the year, a chance to play on one of those college campuses, a chance to compete for a ring, the more schools that you have that, that's going to keep our numbers up. But, you know, I think you're going to see, I see, I think you're going to see your bottom line affected with only four, four classifications. And now, what's going, what you're going to run into is, you're going to start seeing kids transfer. You're going to start seeing kids jumping ship. You're going to start seeing kids want to get to, you know, and it's very hard, it's very hard to keep kids in your particular program when somebody's winning all the time. You might not lose quantity, but you will lose those quality kids out of your program if they're trying to jump ship and go to a contender. And you see it in the NBA, you know, that's become sensationalized of these super teams. And, you know, it just kind of goes back to that point. Well, if you got a team, and I don't know what the criteria is going to be to get inside of the playoffs, but if, if, if you got a team, you know, like a Cape Fear, who's winning every year, kids are going to start matriculating over there because that's if, if, if you got a team, you know, like a Cape Fear who's winning every year, uh, kids are going to start matriculating over there because that's going to be their way to get into the playoffs. Especially if your team doesn't get in the playoffs two or three years. So it, it, you know, the rich will get richer. But for teams like Southview, uh, we're going to compete. We're going to work hard. You know, we try to keep our kids, uh, you know, as competitive as possible. Uh, and you know, when we get in, when we get into the playoffs, you know, it, it is what it is. But I just see the, the after effects of this type of, uh, classification. So that's my take. Thank you so much.
Uh, Rodney, I appreciate that, uh, and, and absolutely respect your opinion. Cause, uh, as you know, you've been at some different schools as well and you've been on that ground and you, you've seen this play out firsthand. Uh, and also I'm going to go over here to Coach Jeremy Buck at Sanderson High School, kind of wrapping up these 4A coaches that we've got online right now. And, and Coach, I know you got some guys still trying to get on. So some of these guys begin to drop off, we'll be able to shift in some new coaches that add to the discussion. Uh, but by all means, if you've still got some things you want to say, uh, guys, you can stick around. Uh, but Coach Buck, uh, we'll, we'll kind of throw it to you and, uh, get your point.
You're muted, Coach.
Appreciate it. Um, I agree with everybody said, and I think overall it's just a lot in the last, what 10 days, right? They, they hit us with this no subdivision and then they throw these conferences at it. And, and in Wake County, let's be honest, it's not going to change a whole lot, right? Everything around here is going to be kind of the way it is, you know, there's not going to be a lot of room for maneuvering just because of, of locations and this, that, and the third. But to hit us with reclassification and drop into subdivision and then a week later, you know, at the, at the 3A, 4A splits and the 1A, 2A splits and the disparity between the, the enrollments and the EDMs. And, and we don't know what these, these formulas are and these calculations are. And I think that's part of where our issue comes, right? The same thing happens for max prep ratings and nobody knows what the heck's going on with that. So it feels like everything is so behind closed doors and we don't know what's going on. And like Coach Brew just said, we only, we, we know what we've got, right? We know when we go in in August or February or whatever it is, you know, that if we have a shot or not to really compete for a conference title and get to the playoffs and really sell our kids. But we're selling our kids because we want them to push through adversity. And yes, we want to have an opportunity to win. But when you keep throwing these adversities and these challenges, it, it's, it's a challenge. I mean, it makes it hard on us to keep, to keep the ship steady. And, um, you know, uh, the coaches, you know, like, uh, you, you coached Gentry and those guys out there in, in the mountains and having to travel and having to play, you know, Coach Lawes, I didn't realize as he said, I think he's got 1,300 kids and you know, we've got, I think, uh, I think I checked the other day at Sanderson. I think we have right at 1,700 kids in the building, you know, and, you know, in our conference, you know, everybody's got roughly 24 to 27. So yes, we have a disparity in our conference, but knowing the fact that we could play tough and, and get some experience and have an opportunity to go into the playoffs at the small 4A level was what we, you know, was what we were gearing up for, right? That's why we weren't trying to, uh, complain about it and this, that and the other. We just weren't going to put, put the ball down on all these coaches on there. We just want to spot the ball and play. We do. Okay. But we want to have an opportunity to be able to play against the most competitive situation. And for equity has been a big word that people have thrown out and it's not equitable. It, it's not equitable. And to say that these ISP numbers and trying to figure all this other stuff out to make things equitable, but you have these split conferences. How's that also going to play into the conference, you know, to how you qualify for the state championships, right? Uh, for the playoffs. If, if you're in a 3A, 4A split conference and you have one team, two teams in the conference, like they do down, you know, down east with New Bern, I think D H Conley. How is that going to impact things, you know, up here in Wake County? How's it going to impact things, you know, um, you know, in, in other areas in Fayetteville? Uh, what I do like, you know, and I, and some people might disagree. I like how they went ahead and said, these teams are in the east, these teams are in the west. I think, you know, the numbers were a little bit off. I think there's more teams technically in the east every single year. Um, but they're in, yeah, there you go, um, than there are in the west. But I think that helps. I think there, you know, that line with where's Greensboro going to be? Where is, is the line going to be Greensboro? Winston Salem? What's Richmond County going to do? How's, how's it going to maneuver? I think by doing that, I think that was the best thing that's come out of this. Um, if they were going to go down to the no subdivision deal, that should have been disclosed. I mean, if that was an option, something on the table, that should have been disclosed in my opinion, you know, and put out to these administrators, these, these, uh, these people that are in the decision-making process. So, so they could, they could come to us or ask if they wanted to ask our opinions about what we thought. I, I think, you know, certainly 5A and I think 6A ball tremendously helps because it brings the, the, it condenses the numbers, especially with these charters. And, and we, we have to, we have to be selfless about this whole deal. If I think just about Sanderson High School, I'm being selfless. Uh, I mean, I'm just being too selfish about, about, about us. It needs to be about the state. We need to think about how does this impact at the 1A level? How's it impact up at the big 4A level? You know, like what somebody would say about qualifiers and stuff. This has to be an, almost a major overhaul to get us to where things are, are fair, you know, and that's all we want. We want fair opportunities for our kids to compete.
Uh, thanks, Coach Buck. I appreciate that. And, and, and I like the fact that you brought up the selfishness and the selflessness and, and doing what's right for the state versus necessarily your school. Uh, so, um, high marks and kudos for me just for bringing up that point. Cause I do agree with you there. Uh, guys, I do want to welcome in, uh, my co-host. She was finally able to make it, uh, due to the, uh, 10 person restriction we've got here to the room. Uh, but, uh, guys, we got Dina King on board and obviously we all know Dina and, and appreciate the work she does around the state. But, uh, Dina, you finally was able to make it in and, uh, good, good to have you.
Thank you. Um, just want to point out, kind of like what, uh, Coach said about the East-West. I know that's a big topic every year because you got those teams in the middle of the state that they could play, play west in one year and east in the other. And, uh, with me being more familiar with the small schools, especially in 1A, when you see the teams in Columbus and uh, Hopeton and North Duplin and stuff traveling to Allegheny and the Smoky Mountain Conference. You know, that was kind of ridiculous. You know, it was just a four, I mean, I, uh, I was a member of the Star Mountain team that went down to South Columbus in a four hour drive for a, a, a state, uh, third round matchup. So I'm glad that has been changed. And I agree with a lot of, lot of points today. Uh, obviously 1A and 4A have the most discrepancies. Uh, so, uh, I would not be opposed to at least six classes. Uh, that would help a lot. But the main line is getting all these schools to vote on issues. And me and Chris, you know, me and you talked, I, I think there, there may need to be some monetary penalties for these schools that don't vote on issues. Because we seen it, uh, a few years ago when the, they, they were voting on the, the, uh, cat, Charlotte Catholic Bishop, uh, Cardinal Gibbons, Gibbons issues. Uh, the small schools voted, but the bigger schools didn't because it really didn't kind of affect them. And, you know, it's just, they got to vote, you got to vote.
Yep. I agree, Dana. Uh, well, guys, I want to get to Coach Brett Hickman. He's been patiently waiting and I know he's got some great ideas. I was at a meeting Monday, the Eastern Coaches Football Association and, and he had some, uh, ideas and was very vocal and very involved with those guys. Uh, so Coach Hickman, I want to finally get you on here and, and, um, anxious to hear what you've got to say. And I appreciate you being on tonight.
Yeah, man. Appreciate it, Chris. Uh, there's so much to unpack here. First of all, wholeheartedly agree with Coach Willard. You know, I won a state baseball championship when I was in high school and to our community down in Shaloot, you know, I'm coaching at my alma mater. That was great. You know, I don't think it changes anything. If you're 3A, 3 double A, whatever. Um, so take this from somebody who is recruited in college football, the first eight years of my professional life. It, why does Georgia with roughly the seven bottom high schools, why are they okay with eight state champions or whatever their number is? And, and they separate the private and public or the charters and the non-charters and the multipliers and things of that nature. Uh, the one issue we would have if we just go to six classes straight up is the fact that we've just got so many geographic anomalies in the state and we're one of them, you know, we're locked into, um, you know, we have roughly 1,500 kids, but we're going to routinely play, you know, New Hanover, the New Hanover County schools, um, who, who've got four or 500 more than us. Now it's not as big of a deal for West Brunswick as it is South Brunswick and North Brunswick. We're down to a thousand kids and who are, you know, they're down here playing Laney, who's got 1,200 more in the same conference. Um, and if you go to 3A, 4A, 5A, 6A, you know, our league would be a situation where South Brunswick would be 3A, North Brunswick and us would be 4A and Topsail would be 4A. Where do schools, where do these geograph, geographic outliers go? Um, without being one part of, one class apart, you know, I've, I've heard a issue. Uh, this is actually, I've got to give credit to Jeremy Joyner over at South Lenora is actually to go to three classes, divide the state into thirds and subdivide all of those championships. So essentially you still have, um, essentially you still have six state championships, but you should be able to eliminate quote unquote, split conferences if you only go down to 1A, 2A, 3A. And so you get, you're able to keep the geographic balance, but you still get what we all need. And that's more fair and equitable opportunity for everybody else. But we, you still have to keep this state in mind for the West Brunswick's, the Curatucks and the First Lights who must play in a split league, you know? Uh, there's advantages. It's like, I mean, I listened to guys in Raleigh today and no offense to any of you or Winston Salem or Greensboro or Charlotte. Hey, I don't like our conference. Well, you got to go 25 minutes. You know, I don't think our travel is bad until I was talking to our basketball coach today. We drive to Topsail, you know, which is 60 miles or so. And he's like, gosh, that's a haul. Well, he's coming from High Point Central where he's driving to High Point Andrews every day. So it's a little bit different, but we kind of understand that because we've been doing it for years or so down here. As Brunswick County's grown, we grew out of our natural rivalries, which were the White Bulls and the South Columbuses of the world. And, and as the population of Brunswick County's grown, we've had to go, you, you have to go there. So I, I'm not as big of an opponent of split conferences. I think of everybody else as it relates to 3A, 4A or 2A, 3A. The biggest problem I saw with today is I'm going to, I, my father was a 1A high school football coach before he took the job at West Brunswick. He was at St. Paul's back before consolidation of all these schools in Robison County. And it was St. Paul's and Orem and Littlefield. And well, you still have some of that in pig country, as I call it, with Hugh Martin at North Duplin or Joe Salas at Hopeton. And these places, man, I, I, I have a real hard time seeing North Duplin with 300 kids having to go play in what is the best 2A football league in the state of North Carolina with, or at least eastern North Carolina with Wallace, Rosehill, Clinton, East Duplin. I, I don't think that's fair and equitable under any circumstance. And, and yes, they're closer for those two, but like Lakewood and Union who have been in that league with Hopeton and East and North Duplin. They are now driving to Robison County to play St. Paul's and Red Springs. And I think Union has 350 in their ATM's and St. Paul's now has a thousand. So they're driving an hour and a half to go play somebody with 600 more students. You know, let, let's fight for the little guy a little bit more. And I, I know the state is against this. I know, um, I, I know, I understand they are, but football is a different animal. Are we, why should we be that adverse to having some football only conferences? For these tiny 1A schools where travel is not a factor on Friday night. I understand 4pm tennis match and lost some instruction time. But why are we against the fact that 1As should play 1As in football to take care of those guys? I think I, I, to me, that's the whole thing that I saw today. I just did not like the fact that, you know, the league with North Duplin and Union and Lakewood. And guys, I mean, I'm, I'm more familiar with that. I'm sure there's some issues with that out in the west. Um, and, you know, even when you get into South Side, Chaco, Winity and North Side and those areas, you let, let's make this stuff as fair and equitable as we can for the small schools. And then, I mean, again, I, I listen to Coach Lawes. Coach Lawes has, I think he said 1,300. We have 1,475. But West Brunswick is a benefit of being 3A because Wake County and Durham County and Cumberland County are in the east as all he has in the west with major school classifications is, is Forsyth and Man. So do, because his 175 less people don't pay for free and reduced lunch, he's got to go play Myers Park when I get to play people my own size. And, you know, I've been around this state my entire life and I'm, I obviously love it. And our, our association does some great things. I don't think anybody, um, is arguing that, but we got to get the state championship thing right and let's do it for all sports.
Coach, we'll get back on and now we got Coach Snow and, and we got Coach Lawes here as well still. Uh, Snow, Willard, I'll let either of you go to, to kind of react to what Coach Hickman said. Uh, but the, his comments kind of fall in line with some comments I had with both of you guys on the phone earlier today. Uh, and I saw you shaking your head a lot, Todd. I'll, I'll kind of let you get the first take of this.
You know, you just killed Adrian on that right there by letting me go first. So, you know, everybody in football nation knows Snow can't believe you just did that. But, uh, you know that too, Shane. But no, I think Coach is right. The biggest thing is we got to be for everybody. And, you know, honestly, this does, it affects East a little bit, but we're fine. We play big 4A football and all. I'm not fighting necessarily for Eastern South. I'm fighting for high school athletics in North Carolina. And my biggest thing is I see people say, well, they got a hard job. Okay. First of all, just like football coaches, that's what they signed up for. Okay. Second of all, there's a lot of other states in the United States that this ain't an issue. So there's a lot of plans out there that we could follow. The thing is, one of the coaches hit on, why is everything so secretive? Why is everything so secretive of what they're doing and when they vote? And, um, you know, I, I just, I really think things need to be more transparent. And at the end of the day, I see some of the comments here. I, I, I think, uh, Dina was right where maybe some of these principals need to be held accountable that didn't vote. Um, you know, coaches had no, no, we would be there to vote for this stuff. But once again, we're not in control and maybe it needs to be known what schools and principals didn't vote on stuff.
Yeah, no, I agree. Um, I, I agree totally. And, and let me bring the other guys back on here as well. Let's get, um, Coach Snow, cause he's obviously been waiting and trying a long time to get on. Uh, so Coach, um, have at it. Um, I'm, I'm very anxious to get your take and, and just kind of get your part because like a lot of us, you've been around a long time and you've seen the state from different counties, small school, mountain school, city school. Uh, so you've got a lot to bring to the table as well.
Well, I, I've heard a lot of people talk and, uh, first of all, I appreciate everybody, uh, you know, putting input. I think that's a big, I, I think I wrote it down, you know, there are problems and we need to find solutions. You know, I, I, when I, when a coach comes and tells me, hey, Coach, this ain't working. Well, great. I appreciate that. But tell me, give me a solution. Tell me what, what the solution is. Coach Hickman hit on it. I think, I think one of the things I think we could do, I like the three classifications and then having splits at that point. As, as a school at Western South with 2,400 students, you know, when, when they, when they, when they put the vote out, I, I was a part of it. I didn't, I didn't vote, but I, they asked my input. And through my input, I looked at the question. It's just, I, I think I said this to, uh, uh, Coach Teal yesterday, you know, if, if a coach comes to me and says, hey, let's run inside Veer. And then that's all they say. And they don't tell me how to do it, what to do, what each person's going to do and why this is good for us and why this is not good for us. Then we're, we're not going to do it. So the, the, the question was pretty vague and, and it basically said, you know, we only go to five classifications and there were some things in there. You know, we, we voted yes, we voted yes. But the question we thought was, where are we going to be? You know, what, what, what kind of conference are we going to be in? Are they going to make us play i- in, in a 5A conference, which basically for our size, there's not as many of those people around. So then that was the problem. I, I think if you had a, hey, this is what it's going to look like. This is the way it's going to be. Then I, I think, I think you'd have more people willing to jump on the bandwagon and go, you, you know, I don't like writing people blank checks and signing my name. Cause then you make, you make it out what you want to make it out. And I, and I don't have a pro, I have a problem with that. I've been, I've been at the 2A, 1A level. I've been in the mountains. I've been in, I've been in the city. I don't know if you call Clemens a city, but, uh, but yeah, the village, excuse me. It's not a city. Uh, so, uh, we've been to all those places. And you know what? I, I, I understand the 1A levels. I understand the 2A levels and the fight that they fight. You know, I was at Watauga and you look at Watauga and the times we had there. Oh, I mean, if, if, if we were in the same cut, same dilemma today, it would not happen. It, we, we couldn't do it. I mean, I love the times we had. We wouldn't have had those experiences for those kids, you know, and, and I think there's, we just got, again, we got to give them some solutions. And then I think what we got to do is as a group. You know, everybody's a little excited right now, but I think you got to take that momentum and we got to put, you're going to put the rubber to the road and we got to get together and we got to say, we're not all going to agree. But I think overall, we got to say, here's what we need to do and let's go do it. And then, hey, last time I checked, you know, power and the people, you know, when, when people And then, hey, last time I checked, you know, power in the people, you know, when, when people get together and start doing it, I think it's a positive. So, you know, right now we need to go.
Hey guys, I want to welcome, um, another good buddy of mine, Coach Scott Chadwick, just finally was able to get on. And I know some others are still trying because I'm getting messages here that people are trying to log in. Uh, so those guys drop off, by all means, coaches, there's probably about 20 of them that keep messaging me. So, uh, try to hop on the link. Uh, but Coach Scott Chadwick, uh, you're at the biggest school in North Carolina. So obviously you're at the, the far end of the spectrum. Uh, but, um, I know you've been at some different schools. You've been in the 3A. You've won a championship in Maryland at a smaller school and a big school. So, uh, uh, just thought we'd get your perspective in this tonight and welcome to the show.
Thanks. Appreciate you guys. And, and interesting to hear everybody's perspectives. Um, you know, I don't mind necessarily the split conferences. I grew up in, in Maryland where we were, you know, a part of a split conference. You know, my biggest thing that I, I kind of wish we had gotten a better idea today is, you know, how does this affect the playoffs? You know, since I've been in North Carolina, um, you know, we've had playoffs where your overall record, you know, you had your conference, then your overall record. And I've been in situations where we have now where it's, you know, your conference and then your max preps ranking. And then I believe there, there's been times in other sports, not football, but other sports where you, you have the predetermined brackets. And, and I say all this because knowing how the playoffs are going to work has a very big impact on how I'm going to schedule my non-conference. And, you know, I found out today, you know, my conference has one less team in it. So I have to schedule one more non-conference game than I have in the past. And I would really like to know, you know, what the, the playoff procedure is before I go schedule my non-conference games. I mean, if you're going to tell me that, you know, we're just going to strictly do it by overall record, well, maybe I'm not going to schedule Mallard Creek and, you know, Trinity Christian out of Texas, like I would have had this fall. Um, you know? But if you're telling me that max preps is going to be a part of it and strength of schedule is going to be a part of it, you know, okay. Um, but now looking at, you know, what they're telling us that this might not be finalized till, you know, March or April, whatever it is. You know, if that's when they're going to tell us how they're going to do the playoffs, that makes scheduling really tough. You know, we were talking about it today and our, our non-conference schedule is usually done by now for next year. And I haven't even started that. Um, so, you know, I would like to, to have had a better idea, you know, of how these split conferences are going to impact the playoffs. You know, I don't like, you know, a number one seed for the 4A and a number one seed for the 3A in each conference. I think if you finish first, you get the one. If you finish second, you get a two. It doesn't matter if you're a three or a 4A. Um, and, and I think that should have been addressed as well today.
No, I agree, Coach. Uh, I really do. Um, and, and some other questions, just as we got the group in here, because I know that everybody has had a chance, uh, to finally get a, get their initial point in, um, is I just kind of wanted to throw some other questions up. And you know, some of you guys have already answered this. Uh, you know, one of the ones, uh, should we subdivide the playoffs or not? All the four championships enough, given the member school count? Um, you know, I think most of you have said that and even I, you know, I, I did not like the eight. And I'll be the first to say that I wasn't a fan of eight championships. Cause I thought that was just a little bit too watered down. But with that being said, I think four is grossly too small, given our state number. You know, if you look at states around the country, uh, and some of the other states in similar size to us, I think six seems to be that sweet spot in number, uh, given what we have. And, uh, you know, I just want to open it up to all of you, just a chance to, for you guys to chime in and either speak up or raise your hand, however you want to. Um, if some of you guys, it looks like you're muted, uh, but, uh, hop in and, uh, I'll, I'll just take whoever wants to take first grab at it.
Yeah. And as a guy who, who has coached at a 3A, 4A league, I do not agree with Coach Chadwick's idea that a 3A team, if we finish second, should be seeded behind the 4A team. I, I strongly disagree with that because, but I do agree with the fact that we got to know what the playoffs are going to look like because it totally factors into how I want to schedule my 3A conference games. Because if you're going to penalize me, why should I go across the state line and play Northmore Beach who just played for a state championship in South Carolina? If I'm, you're, you're going to do it by overall record. Why shouldn't I go play a 1A or 2A school? So I mean, I'm with him a hundred percent. I do think, um, this is speculation on my part. I think you're going to see a playoff system that is divided, uh, geographically in a sense where it's going to be, uh, I know they did the pod system. I don't think it's going to be like that. But I think you're going to get in a situation where they're trying to reduce travel, where you're going to divide, say they divide the east in four, four different sectionals. And I don't mind that, you know, but once again, we're, we're kind of on our own little island. I don't think anybody in Charlotte is too interested in playing Charlotte playoffs every year. Raleigh is the case may be. Um, but you know, we got to get an idea on how they're going to do these playoffs very quickly. Because it just to me, it determines everything that you do, um, in the month of August and September.
And then we see Coach Donnie Kiefer, who all of you know, and he's played coached against all of you at some point in his career, uh, has done amazing things, two championships. Uh, turned a struggling program around already in Charleston. Uh, and you see his comment there at the bottom, uh, that South Carolina has five championships with half the number of schools that we've got here. Uh, Tar Heel State. So, uh, obviously Coach Kiefer makes a great point, uh, and has been around. Uh, Coach Samick, I saw you had kind of raised your hand and you wanted to make a comment. So I'll give you.
Sure. And, and this goes back to the split conference thing. Okay. Before the, the, the realignment from, from what, what we're in right now. We had 11 split conferences from 1A through 4A. Okay. These new conferences, there are now 33 split conferences, I believe I counted today. And they're talking about playoff seeding and, and I'm with, I'm with, with Coach Chadwick. If you are, there's two 4A schools in a split 4A, 3A conference and they win, you know, and they don't win the conference, they shouldn't get the number one seed. We had a, we had a problem with this a couple of years ago with South Caldwell, I believe. As, you know, small 4A coaches, please help me out here. They finished 2-9. They beat McDowell and lost to Watauga and, and St. Stevens and all. And then they ended up getting like a first round bye. So they have to.
First round bye in a home game.
And a home game. That is correct. At South, you know, and they were 2-9, I think is their overall record. So they went to playoffs 2-8. There has to be something done, especially with the amount of split conferences that you have now. We've tripled, we've tripled our split conferences is what we've done. And so how's that going to affect playoff seeding? Cause now I'm hearing playoff seedings to be like conference A plays conference C and conference B plays conference D at this level. So that's kind of like something they do in South Carolina, I do believe. Uh, and other states they do that as well. But I'm just, I just, just curious about that. And Coach Hickman, I totally get what you're saying. But yeah, from the, from your standpoint, but like from our standpoint, like Coach Chadwick and myself and the 4A schools, Coach Snow. Okay. If you're in a split 4A, 3A conference or a 3A, 2A conference and you're a 3A school and you, you, you're finished second to a 2A, you should get a number two seed. You shouldn't get a number one seed just because you're the best higher level, uh, team in that conference. That's just what I'm thinking. But like I said, we've tripled split conferences. That's what we've done. If you go back and look, we've gone from 11 to 33. And back to what I was saying again, they want equity. This is why they came up with all this, the formulas and whatnot. Whenever you have split conferences, where there goes your equity. That, that kind of destroys the equity. Like ask Union Pines if they feel that they're, it's, just ask them about their new conference. Tell me what, what they say. And, and you know, that's just about all I, what I was thinking about.
Yeah. Union Pond, Southern League, you know, both of them, um, are, are going to be in there, uh, in the buzzsaw. Uh, we got a couple of new faces in here. Coach Mark Holcomb, uh, has just joined us, uh, head coach Oak Grove High School. Um, and, uh, Coach, uh, I, I know you're one of the smartest guys in the room now. So, uh, we'll, we'll get your thoughts on all of this because you've sent me a few text messages. So I know you've got some opinions.
He can't even cut his mic on.
Okay. Are you there, Coach?
That's Davidson County.
Yeah. You can't, he can't even cut his mic on.
Uh, if you're doing this from an iPhone, you may need to back out and try to come back in. Uh, that seems to be, uh, the way the system rolls. Go all the way out and come back in.
Mr. Smarty.
Nope.
No, you're good. Get out.
All right. Hey, um, we, we've got a few of you guys that's kind of hung around all day. We still got Dina here. If you've got any, uh, um, things, uh, Coach Hickman, or you got another one?
No, I was going to let somebody else get in and say goodnight to my children.
Oh, okay. Well, we appreciate you getting in and, um, appreciate you being a part of this. You brought some incredible ideas to the floor tonight.
So you guys, you all have a great night.
And there comes Coach Holcomb. You got us now?
No. No, he don't have us. He's muted.
All right.
Smartest man in the room.
Can you hear me now? We got you.
I'm like that Verizon commercial. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me? All right. No, uh, I, I've, I just had a comment about the, uh, the number, talked about the number of people voting. Uh, charter schools were limited at a hundred, uh, schools prior to, you know, no one getting into politics, but prior to a couple of years ago. And now the cap's off those. So the, the charter schools, I mean, that's the, that's the elephant in the room. They're, they're not going to, they're not going to vote against their own, you know, their own. And there's enough of those people in there to, uh, to make sure that either they don't vote or they vote against it. Because you know, why would you vote against your own interest? And you, uh, you know, if you do a multiplier, then you're going to be in, you, you know, you're going to be moved up in classification, uh, which is, I mean, that's, I think that's the big issue that we're not, that people aren't talking about right now. You know, not enough people voted, uh, for, for the classifications. And I think that's kind of where they're steering things back too. They want us to do more classifications. Uh, so they're kind of, it's almost like they're kind of forcing our hand. You know, I've been at, when I was at North, you know, we were 1,400 kids and playing in a big conference, uh, in Winston. And then, you know, the only time we were ever able to really compete in the playoffs is when we went down to, uh, you know, the split, the split 4A. Uh, and because that was going to be a tough thing for us. And now we're, you know, we're back up, we're, we're going to be 3A now, uh, at, at Oak Grove. So we're, we, you know, we're growing. So 3A is not as big of a discrepancy, but you know, uh, you know, I've been in those situations where you're playing against, you're taking a 1,400, uh, you know, kids to play a school that has 2,800. And like Coach, uh, Samick was talking about a while ago, you know, we played TC Roberson, two years in a row at TC Roberson, who was three and eight or two and eight. I'm not sure exactly what they were. And you know, we finished second or third in our conference and they, they beat one team in their conference and they're, they're a, a home seed. You know, so I think there's, there's, there's a lot of issues that are out there that probably need to be discussed, uh, in terms of that. Uh, but you know, like you said, there's so many, so many options. Uh, I agree with, if you're going to split classifications, if you're going to split up state championships, why not do it across the board? Why not do it for basketball? Why not do it for softball, everything? I mean, you know, I don't think the expense is that much.
I agree. I brought Coach Privet back on. Uh, Coach Privet, I know you've got some thoughts on the charter schools as well, uh, being a small 1A up in the northeastern part of the state. Uh, wanted to see if you could give us your thoughts.
Yeah. Like, like Coach Sam, they, they needed to be split up as well. Um, like I said, it doesn't affect the bigger schools as much as it does us. And, and it doesn't affect football, um, at this point, not in our area, but I, I can see sometimes basketball and, and baseball and some other sports. Um, like one coach said earlier, it is the quality player that those schools get. But then also you get new charters that come into your conference. And for us, they're not football playing, but they're taking up a spot, which leaves us to have to go out and get non-conference games. And for us, I mean, I tried my best to, um, looking at the playoff formula, you look at trying to schedule. For us, we try to schedule a lot of 2A schools close to us. I mean, running Rappids is next door to us. I'll go back to my hometown, Herford, and we've played, um, last year. And Bertie, when they were still 2A. And if they were using the right form, the formula that they used to use where the strength of your opponent mattered. That's one reason I, I scheduled those games. And then you turn around and another year you're using the match prep, um, formula. You don't, you don't know how to schedule the games. And then you're, at some point you have to schedule bigger schools because you got teams in your conference taking up space, but they're not, they're not football playing schools. So I'd rather they just go to their own conference. I mean, it's no big knock against charters, but it makes a difference in small, in, in the area that we, it, it affects us a lot.
No, I totally agree. We've got a few other coaches, uh, Coach Kennedy Tinsley, who has now, uh, been able to, to join the team. I'll bring everybody back on screen. She can say hello to him. Uh, but Coach Tinsley, new head coach at Mallard Creek, but Coach, you've been at, um, you've been at, um, Southeast Guilford. So you've obviously been around the state as well. Uh, first welcome here to the show. Appreciate you making some time. I know it was hard getting on with all the coaches on here, but, um, we would love to hear your point and, uh, just kind of see where you stand.
Man, Chris, appreciate you having me on, man. Um, glad to see everybody. I'm, I miss maybe part of, um, the discussion and what everybody's been talking about. But you know, obviously with the realignment, I think it's a huge deal. I've, I've always been curious about, um, the model in which they, um, choose. And I'm always curious about, and I'm kind of ignorant of the rest of the states in the rest of our nation. Um, you know, as far as what's the format for other states to, um, kind of divide high schools so that it's not only competitive, but fair. Um, I do see a lot of, um, things that I feel like were unfair for certain schools. And the biggest thing was just the discrepancy between the school sizes, um, and some of, some of the, um, divisions that, that teams were left in. I thought it really gave, um, some schools and teams from the back, put them at a really, really, um, unfair disadvantage. So that's kind of my thoughts on it, man. That was it.
Well, Coach Chadwick, you coached in both Georgia, I believe, and Maryland. And, and you're familiar with some of the other schools and, and, and states in the country. Uh, kind of explain to Coach Tinsley, uh, maybe your point of view on how you've seen at least the other states you've worked at do their realignments.
Well, um, both of those states are strictly off of, you know, what your student population numbers are. Um, what I like about both of those states is that it's done every two years, um, instead of every four. I, I don't like being locked into something, um, you know, for a four-year period. I, I think so much changes, um, year to year that, you know, I think it's really important that, you know, we do this, um, not, you know, over four years. And, uh, you know, uh, as it is now, you know, we've been told that, you know, some of the conferences, um, that were put together, there's going to be schools added to them at some point in the next four years. So, you know, I wish they would kind of take a look at it more than, you know, every four years and, um, you know, and then kind of back to the, the discussion about the state, you know, championships. And, you know, four or eight, whatever it is, I, I like, you know, what Coach Hickman said about giving, um, you know, more teams an opportunity to compete. And you know, and I know nobody wants to get into the, well, is it, you know, this for football or, you know, is it fair for football to do it, not the other sports? You know, and I know we want to say the politically correct thing, but let's be honest, you know, football funds, you know, a lot of what goes on, you know, in, in the state and funds a lot of the other sports. So if any sport should be handled differently, then I, I think it should be football. Um, because, you know, football is the one that generates, you know, the money. And there's a lot of things that go on in the state. Um, you know, football probably fun.
No, I agree. Uh, we've got a few more guys back to the, to the room as well. Um, I want to bring up both of those points, Coach Chadwick. And we got Coach Russell Stone back and Coach Nate Connor, uh, who, who's very tied in, uh, to the, uh, Football Coaches Association. My question is, is we've got a couple of things that, that have been floated around that may or may not come out, that's come out officially. We've all heard the 10 games or with one of them being an endowment, but is it going to be 10 games in 11 weeks or 10 games in 10 weeks? And the rumor I've been hearing, and I don't want to spread rumors, but you know, the, the thing we've been hearing is it could be 16 games in 16 weeks now. And, and Coach Snow, I know you've had some questions about that. I'll let you start with this, but I'd love to get all of you guys' opinion on it.
Well, first of all, I, I think it's, I, they love to sit and tell you, don't schedule games. Guess what? It, it, well, I've already started calling. Now we're not, we're not going to do contracts. We understand that. We got gentleman's agreement. But then today, uh, I, I, I love Shane Laws, went to school with him. He, he's like me. When, when you've been pretty successful, I mean, Coach Tinsley, Chadwick, I mean, all those guys, they ain't a lot of people calling you wanting to play. And so, so basically what you end up having to do, it becomes an issue of trying to schedule games. And, and I, I think a part of what they're trying to do is say, can we get this done this year? And then maybe we could go to the two-year plan because if they could do it this way, they could, they could get it done. So if you're not scheduling, I think that's something that, you know, granted, they say we ain't going to do contracts, but you gotta do that. But if they go 10 and 10, if they go 10 and 10 and you play in the final, you're going to play 16 weeks straight. That's crazy. But they said, no, we might go 10 and 11 weeks. Then you're going to go back to 17 weeks. You can go back to 17 weeks, which is what they wanted to get away from, correct? And now, so if you go 16 weeks straight, I just don't, I don't, you know, we talked about safety the other day. We talked about safety. We want to be safer, right? Is, is this one, will it be safer? I, I, you know, I don't know. I think that's a, you know, and we might not, we might not play 16 games straight. I'd love to. But then again, it's like, for teams to do that, that's crazy.
And I was just over, I just got a text message from somebody who, who I consider that possibly is in the know. And he said it's going to be 10 and 11. So we'll see. Uh, so, um, you know, but then, you know, with the start date being pushed back a week and, and you know, I don't think this is on their agenda, nor do I think they necessarily care. But then all of a sudden it puts your state championship games same weekend, Trumbull again. So that brings up another conundrum right there. Um, Coach Connor, uh, you just got on here and I'd love to get your thoughts on this. And I know you tried to get on earlier and you couldn't, and I appreciate you trying back. But, uh, Coach Nate Connor, DH Conley, uh, welcome here and, uh, would love to get your thoughts on everything.
Thanks a lot for having me, Chris. Uh, you know, it's a pleasure to be on here with all these great coaches and, and just to be able to share a voice. Uh, but you know, talking about what we're talking about right now with as many games as they're, they're cutting us down to 10 and the whole thought process I thought with that, that is, we need to get less games. We're, we're talking about player safety and everything else, but then they go on and they add, they add another round of the playoffs. So like Coach Snow says, if you, if you're going all the way through to the state championship, you're still playing the same amount of games. And they're, you know, so it's, it's, it's counterproductive in that way. So how can you say your number one thing is player safety? Uh, but then you're still playing the same amount of games if you're going to the state championship, playing an NFL season. Uh, is, is the same, the problem there. I think with all of this, I've been able to listen to all of it and, you know, with the, with the realignment and everything and is the people, we, we keep hearing that not everybody is, is voting, but we don't know who's not voting. Um, but then you get on here and you hear people that say, you know, it's not going to make a difference and no, not, nothing against that. It's not going to make a difference if we vote or not, we're going to be stuck in this situation. So maybe those are the people not voting. Or maybe it's the charter schools that don't want to be affected. So the people that aren't voting are not, are not, uh, you know, affected in this situation and it's hurting all the people. And obviously every time a decision is made, um, you know, not, not everybody's going to be happy with it, but from everything I hear, the people, majority of people are not happy with it. And the people that maybe aren't voting are the ones that might be happy with the situation. And, you know, that, that is what it is. And we're going to deal with it however we got to. And, you know, we want to compete with the best of them. And I, I think the main thing is we as coaches, I think all across the state and all of sports, we, I haven't heard one person, whether they like it or not, say they don't want what's best for everybody. But the problem with that is, is we want to get a voice out there as coaches to do that, to, to make sure that we can come together and unite for everybody, but there's so much discrepancy in the, in the information to be able to get the voice the right way to make something happen. We don't have all the information about how they go about doing this and the accountability. And I think that's where some of the challenges lie, lie that we want to make something happen, but we don't have all the information to make sure we do the right thing to change it.
Great points, Coach. Uh, and, and you articulated that very well. And, and, and I appreciate, and you're the second person who kind of went in there and talked about, you know, uh, not necessarily what's better for, for your school, but what's better for everybody as a whole. Uh, we got another, uh, coach. Uh, it looks like Coach Russell Stone has decided to rejoin us. Uh, there's Coach Mufasa. Um, and, uh, I'll open it up to whoever else. Uh, Coach Stone, you're back. Uh, I'd love to get your take.
Um, Phil, I hate to tell you this, but North Carolina is a basketball state. And, and they will always promote basketball a little more than football here. It's the Dean Smith effect. I hate to tell you all that. But that's been, uh, rooted in our state association since the very beginning. Um, you know, we had, uh, we had come a long way in the middle of my career and I've seen this go backwards a little bit, uh, the last couple of years. Uh, I, I think what we think of as football coaches is considered less and less. Um, you know, part of it is, um, administrators used to come from football coaches. You'd have a guy do his 28 years and then he'd get to be a principal for four to build up his, uh, to build up his retirement. And that's the way, uh, North Carolina high school football was kind of built. Um, I mean, it was just the way it was. Uh, Brett Hickman was on earlier. His, his dad Yogi can tell you all about it for sure. Um, so you just, you just got a completely different mindset running, uh, the association. Um, in the beginning, it was all about getting as many kids playing. It was really inclusive. Um, I'll be frank with you. Y'all go on and believe this, but my first year coaching, I had to be in attendance 60% of the days to be there and pass three out of six classes. Uh, so you know, and that was because of the agricultural background in Northern Carolina. Um, so you know, Northern Carolina, it's always kind of been a fight between the old and the new. It's more and more people move here from other parts of the, the United States. There's been change. And, uh, we're probably going to go through some more as North Carolina grows. Uh, shoot, I drove through, uh, Clemens the other day. My gosh. I, I, you know, I've been gone from there since 2004. They're putting houses where there didn't used to be places. I don't know how they're getting them in there. They're everywhere. So there are parts of the state that are growing so fast. Uh, and, and then you have the rural areas that are just the complete opposite. Things are in a crawl like they were in 1959. Um, you know, South Robinson High School is where I grew up. It's from Roland High School. Shoot, they closed that thing down and made kids drive 25 minutes, uh, to get to the next school closest. So uh, there, there's been a lot of big changes in education and I think we're going through one right now. Um, you young guys really got to, got to stake your claim in this. Uh, Adrian's done a good job with it. He and Shane over the, over the years for this generation of coaches. Um, you know, I, I know, um, I know Coach Bailey from Scotland's been in on it too, working real hard, but right now we're stuck in a situation where we really have to, uh, you gotta, you gotta go to the board, guys. You gotta have, you gotta have voices on the board. We had a bunch of coaches on there a couple of years ago, and now they've kind of, um, they've, uh, passed through the time stage. So, you know, that's where it all happens. It's the NCHSA A board. And we as football coaches, we can, uh, we can have a say and they might listen to us. But depending on the makeup of that board, they're gonna probably not take us quite as seriously some years as others. Uh, again, I've only been doing it 42 years, so I probably don't know what I'm talking about. But, uh, that's, that's just, uh, my experience here. So anyway, um, I remember when they, when they changed alignments, we, we had a big coaches meeting and and they said, hey, what's, what's going on here? And, uh, you know, let's, let's adopt the West Virginia version. And I said, West Virginia, South Carolina's got a great program, but as a state, we didn't want to do what South Carolina was doing. You remember that, Deanna? Um, you know, it's when, when they first thought about all of this because, uh, you know, early nineties, all of a sudden schools had grown and 1,200 was having to play 2,500. So that's when they split us into A and, 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 uh, double A. Um, you know, I, I tell you, um, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of adjustment to this and, and that's going to be up to, you know, some administrators. And again, people on the board. I'm, um, we in Hickory, we, we've been, we've been going to McDowell and Watauga and, you know, we drive, we drive by 10 high schools that we could be playing instead. Uh, there are just so many in this area. And then again, uh, I worked at South Robinson High and, uh, we had to drive two and a half hours to get to, to about every game in Brunswick County because they were in our conference. And I know Shane's got, probably got some, uh, some thoughts about that with, with kind of where they're ending up now. Um, whenever you have this realignment, they're going to be winners and losers. And that's just the way it is. And hopefully the next four years will be your turn to have something good happen to you. Um, what do you think, guys? Y'all, y'all been watching this a while. Those of you who have been around with me, there's, it's just the way it is. You can't please everybody, you know? Um, I mean, uh, screw, it's just, my goodness, I don't know how to put it any plainer. Uh, you know, it, it is, it is political in a different nature. Um, and there's only so much control we as football coaches have over unless we're sitting on the board.
Well, and, and you bring that up, Russell, and, and you bring the political aspect of it. And, you know, David Gentry, who's also been around, um, probably a little bit longer than you, Coach. Um, he kind of alluded to the fact that, you know, it might be a deal where you have to get the legislature involved and, and, and I've had this conversation with some other guys today. And, and you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to throw stones at the NCHSA. I mean, we're all appreciative of what they do. But it, it, and I know I'm probably walking on thin ice by saying this, but you know, we've, we've started to see these changes in the last decade when they kind of moved away from the UNC system and became their own private entity. And, and that seems to be when we started to see a lot of things change. And, and I had a lot of coaches bring that up to me, uh, today as well. And if any of you just want to throw anything out to that effect.
Yeah, it, it's lonely at the top. And, and bottom line, they got to make decisions. Uh, all of us make decisions on Friday nights in front of a lot of people that are, that are scrutinized. And they've made some decisions that are scrutinized. And we are the people at this point, so we have to do a good job of trying to help navigate it the best we can to help ultimately one group of people. And it's the kids. That's really what we want to try to do. So, you know, like I said, we make decisions and, and we get, hey, it's going to be put in the paper tomorrow morning about it. Uh, they, they've made decisions. It's, it's been put in the paper. And we're part of it. So it's one of those things where I think you gotta, we look at it and, and we got to try to adjust it again. I think it comes back to there's problems. We got to try to find some solutions the best we can to try to help our kids and our schools. I know a lot of people have mentioned this, you know, they talk about, you know, everybody. And I think you do have to think about everybody, but ultimately everybody here is the head coach of something. They also got to, they also got to do look out for their school. I mean, that is their job. That's our job, you know? It's like my guys, you know, the D-line coach, he's going to look out here's D-lime and that's what he's supposed to do. You know, we're going to look after our schools the best we can. Now granted, I'm not going to say, hey, we're going to be in this one pod with like five schools and we're going to go play. That's not going to happen. We understand that. But you do have to take care of your school too and try to see, but, but ultimately they're in leadership. It's lonely there. They got to do what they got to do, but it also is something that we can do to try to help out, try to navigate it the best we can.
I agree. Uh, Luke Little, Laney High School, just finally able to get back on here. Coach, I know you've been trying all night to get on here and I appreciate your effort. Um, very anxious to hear what's going on in Wilmington and, and you've been in the east and the west and in the middle. So you've seen the state uh, from a, a lot of vantage points and your dad was a longtime coach too. So I'm certainly anxious to get your thoughts.
Yeah, going back to what Deanna was talking about a while ago, I, I think now six years at Whiteville, we were put in the west, five of those uh, years. So, um, we, we made those trips to, uh, Mountain Heritage and we went to Black Mountain Owen one year and we, we've been everywhere, but, um, you know, can you hear me?
Yeah, we got you, Coach.
Okay. Uh, my biggest thing is kind of what Coach Hickman hit on. Um, you know, if we, it, the state's in a hard kind of rock, trying to rock in a hard place. Um, if, if we went five classifications where we're at right now, um, just our conference alone would, would range from three A to five A. The closest four A schools from Wilmington i- is Greenville. Um, you, you know, we'd be going two hours to, to get close to another four A school. Um, as far as Brunswick County, the three.
Well, I think we lost Coach there. Um, I think we lost Coach Little. Uh, he's making some good points too. So, uh, hopefully he can get back on. Uh, any of you guys want to, um, kind of hop in and, and, and fill the space until he's able to get back, uh, uh, I'll open up for anybody.
Well, I think the biggest thing is just are, are we, are we continuing to progress? Um, you know, the, the issues we're talking about today were issues, you know, back in 2000, 2001, we said there was a huge disparity with, they in four A schools and, and enrollment numbers and it affected playoffs. So we went to subdivide. Then, yes, several years ago, we were talking about there was such an issue with playoffs in these split conferences and you know, trying to figure out who's making the playoffs. We wanted to get, we wanted to get away from split conferences. And now what are we talking, I mean, what we've talked about tonight is now we've got a ton of split conferences again, and we're back to four classifications. And I mean, you know, 20 years, we're going backwards. Um, so overall, I mean, we've, the game in North Carolina is great. The game has continued to get better and better every year. A lot of great players and a lot of great coaches. And, but it just seems like we, we, we just want to keep spinning our wheels instead of continuing on trying to find ways to, to progress and, and and, uh, the right kind of attention to the top school football in North Carolina.
No, I agree with that, Coach. Um, Coach, uh, Little, I hope you see your rival, Coach Hickman's comment about your offense.
I did. Uh, I don't know if it's the internet or me. I'm not real good at this stuff, uh, yet, but but the last thing I was going to say is, is anybody thought of a way that we could, we could play our conference schedules that, that are our conference alignment they give us? Um, and then re, read, you know, go to five classifications for playoffs. Um, we, we put so much emphasis on max prints that nobody knows really how that works, but you know, is there a way we can play? You know, I can play my, my four A, three A league.
There he goes again. I think I get the gist of what Coach is saying though, because I've had another coach bring that up. You know, what if you did do the three classifications and subdivide and you know, you play your geographical based rivals within your region and your conference? And you, you know, you may be in a team, you know, West Forsyth might be playing Davie and North Davidson or, or so on and so forth. But then come playoff time, you're going to be seeded based off the ADM for playoff purposes, but not necessarily in the same conference. I'll throw that out to you guys. And I think that might be what Coach Little, it looks like he's back, but if any of you guys want to, um, uh, add to that.
Um, Chris, if you don't mind, I, I wanted to tie my, it, it's crazy because I've been in North Carolina, um, the majority of my time coaching, but I started out in Virginia. And I still have a lot of friends that coach in Virginia, uh, especially being from the DC area. And I just went back to go look at the playoff, uh, format in Virginia. And over almost 20 years, it hasn't changed much. And since I've been in North Carolina, it's, I, the playoff format, um, it's changed so much. And I, I think we just have to find a system that works and kind of stick with it. Um, looking at class and regions and then playing, they call them districts, but, uh, kind of keeping your conference and then go with your region and go with admin numbers, um, come playoff times. I think that would be a great idea. Um, I will say though, just one other thing, just kind of being in this 85 corridor. It was fun taking a pencil and, uh, paper, um, just jotting what conferences might look like in our area because it could have definitely went either way. And just having the opportunity to listen to some of the coaches from the mountains and some of the, uh, coaches out east where this really affects those schools. I, now, you know, it kind of blows my mind how, how big of a deal this is. And I just hope, uh, North Carolina at some point can find a system they can stick with and, and, and stay with that system for a while.
I agree. Um, I, I do agree. I mean, you make some solid points. Um, we, we had Coach Little, we lost him again. Uh, I'll open up the floor to any of you guys that want to hop in there and respond to Coach Robinson or to add your own two cents.
Uh, North Carolina is growing so fast and, and they're adding so many high schools. Um, Jesus, I mean, it's just unbelievable. Uh, it's, it's going crazy around Charlotte and Raleigh. And, and that growth is, uh, more than, unless you're part of it, uh, or part of a big system, I don't, I don't think you quite understand, uh, you know, 1992, I was at West Forsyth. Um, and you know, it was four A and, uh, that was it. But at that time, we were about 1,300 kids. And the biggest school in the state was, you know, 1,900, 2,000. And now the biggest schools in North Carolina are just under 4,000. Um, you know, meanwhile, West Forsyth is probably over 2,000 now consistently, even with them opening Reagan. Um, that, that has caused, uh, the upheaval in all this. It's been state growth. I think, I think that's the reason there have been so many changes in the system. Um, you know, but, uh, really to me, uh, in my lifetime, there's, there's been three. There's been the regular way. And like I told you, that we did division one and two uh, for a while. And since then, we've done subdivided playoffs that Shane was talking about earlier. Um, I, I think we had a great system. I think the only problem was, um, we needed to play the state title games in smaller venues. Um, probably, uh, really, you know, lessen the price and get a lot more people in, in the place. Uh, as far as I'm concerned, um, that's probably costing us a lot of money right there. But, um, I, I haven't really been in administrative end of it. I just wanted to coach. Uh, my mom, God bless her, wanted me to be a principal. Y'all can imagine that, can't you? But anyway, uh, you, you own guys that, that are going to be in it. You know, I'm, this is 42 for me. I'm going to borrow time. Uh, Snow and some of my, um, uh, younger cohorts, you know, it's, it's, it's their time to take the mantle and lead and Shane and you guys. And then, uh, you know, got a lot of good young coaches, but you know, Nate, your, your father's been in it forever. And Kennedy, you've been playing football forever. I don't know you. I don't know you. And, you know, Mark Holcomb, he's been around since the jail was pink in Davidson County. And the, and they used to send the policeman over to your sideline to harass you during the game.
Let me ask you this, Chris. Of this group, what is the, does the, the, the three classifications in splitting it in the playoffs? What does, I mean, just, just, I mean, that, we just talked about it here. I, I just listened to some of these guys and they're talking about their, their areas, you know, and I talk about like down east and some of those places. That just seems right to me. Because now, again, when we talked about it in the beginning, we struggled about what conference we would be in. And we're large. How does that, I mean, now you will be able to play who you want to near you. And then when you go to playoffs, you're gonna be able to go where you want to. I mean, you're gonna be at your size. To me, does that not, that just sounds right to me? Does that, am I crazy? I mean,
See what people think.
Schedule there, baby.
Yeah.
No, totally agree.
I think you're absolutely right, you know?
Go ahead, Coach. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Mark.
Uh, I, I, maybe this is the civics teacher in me, but I think, you know, what, what we're gonna have to change, the first thing we want to change is the amendment process takes three fourths of the vote. That's the first thing that's going to be changed. Because I don't think you're gonna get three fourths of the schools to, especially including the charter schools and the quote private schools that are in our, in, in our association. You're not gonna get all those people to vote the same thing. So the first thing we have to do is we have to figure out, how do we get an amendment to be less, to, to need less of a voting? Does it need to be two thirds? Does it need to be majority? And then, then you can get into looking at all the other issues. But I think the first issue that has to be attacked is, you know, three, four, 75% of the people having to vote the same thing, that's a lot. I mean, we don't even ask, you know, we don't even ask Congress to do that. You know, so we're trying to, we're trying to figure out how we can get 75% of the people in who are, you know, with, some of them are concerned about basketball, some of them are concerned about football, some of them are concerned about golf, tennis, whatever it might be. You know, depends on what your school's good at. You know, you're gonna be concerned about that. So the, the charter schools that are, you know, the basketball factories, they're gonna be concerned about basketball. So that's all they're really worried about. Some of the charter schools don't even play, a lot of them don't even play football. So they're not gonna, they're not gonna vote in terms of anything football related because they don't care about it. So we got to figure out how we can get an amendment introduced that will change that from the 75% of the three fourths to something less than that. And then I think we can probably get something done.
Well, very solid point, Coach Holcomb. I agree. Because, you know, and I had a superintendent tell me this, and this is a superintendent who just happens to be on the board. And, and he said that, you know, sometimes sending it to the principals, he thinks is the wrong answer. Because he being a superintendent in a large system with 20 plus schools, he said he can email a, a principal asking for a response and they might not get a response from a principal in two, three, four days. Because as a principal, he's got so many other things to deal with. Parents, teachers and so much that athletics and especially, you know, things like that is just so far from their radar at times. And he said it should have been an AD thing. But I agree with you. I mean, it's hard to get everybody to vote. But then again, the two thirds, I mean, you're right. I mean, that's tough.
I wanted to add this, man. I, I get frustrated because of what our jobs are, is supposed to be. I think for us coaches, in order for us to get better as coaches, we actually go and look at what other coaches are doing, essentially models. And then we say, hey, here's what we can take from that. And we're gonna try to use that for our program. Those little nuggets that we get from each other, other schools, colleges, NFL, and we bring it back to our school and we use it to make our kids better. And I think every job should be like that. I think principals should do that. I think athletic directors should do that. And so the, the goal of athletic, athletic directors, I want the best athletics program for my school. Right? He should go, just like we go, and look at other models and say, hey, here's a ways of, other schools have really good programs. Do they build it around a football program? Do they build it around the success of the other coaches, yada, yada? And then I think states should do that. It's, what, what is the difference? I think the North State of North Carolina, they should go and look at other models. And, and that's what I'm saying, I'm ignorant of, of Coach Robinson saying, hey, here's what Virginia's been doing and they've never changed it. Right? This works. I'm sure they got some small schools around some big schools. They got the same issue. I think every state probably has that issue. But I'm sure that there's some states that's doing a really great job at providing a great experience for their kids. Now, how do you define that? Is it academics? Is it amount of kids that go to colleges and universities? Do they have the support of the colleges and universities? Like, what does it look like? And then I would like to say, you bring that back and say, hey, here's our plan. Here's what we're basing it off of. We went and saw Virginia, we saw Florida, we saw South Carolina, right? Because the South Carolina model, it is a whole lot of emphasis on football. Right? They are building their athletics around football. That's the model. What do you like about it? What don't you like about it? Right? It seems to me that the schools, maybe it's less school, so maybe it doesn't match North Carolina. Right? So then what schools do have the same? I think that thought process, I don't understand why it's not used for every job. You know, it seems like as far as coaching, teaching, sometimes that's the thought. But as we go up the ladder, it's kind of like, hey, we're gonna do our own thing versus looking and saying, hey, what can we learn from others? And then let's bring that back to the table to, to have a great product. You know? So that's what frustrates me, man. And I don't know, I don't know the answer. I don't even know if there is an answer. I think whatever we come up with, there's gonna be some negatives. But certainly, I don't see the drive to be the best. That's, you know, yeah, they're gonna tell us now, hey, coaches, you gotta, you ain't gonna hold us accountable. Right? For the, for the kids. And they'll say that it's for the kids. But are, are we doing that across the board? I, I don't know.
Russell?
Uh, Snow, tell them if, it all depends on that guy that sits behind the principal's desk where we've worked. And I know maybe Mecklenburg puts a lot more on ADs, but in all honesty, principals are giving their schools like a ship and they're to put their own stamp on it. And the superintendents give them that freedom to, to try to form their own school and get their people in there. That's why so many people like us leave and have to go some other place. Because a new principal moves in and he wants, or she wants to bring in a principal that they have known and are very comfortable with. And you might've been like the last year I was at Douglas Bird, you know? We were only 11 and three and got told we needed to leave town. And, you know, Babe Howell went undefeated and won the state title in football and baseball. And they ran him out of Silver Webster one year. It can, it can happen. Woo-hoo. But anyway, in my experience, it's, it's the person that sits behind the principal's desk and what they want. And then in my situation, think of it, Kennedy, how many schools are in your system? There is one high school in my system. And, you know, I work for the superintendent and it's, it's, it's very different from anywhere else I've ever been because it is a one high school system. And, you know, there's just so many different, North Carolina is so diverse. There's so many big places right now. But then again, there, there's schools that are closing up with, with less than 400 kids and trying to play football and, and do those kinds of things. But charter schools are, are kicking into funds and, and, you know, of course, they're really getting to be, like you said, like the private schools, a basketball factory. And right now, you know, somebody will probably take the lead like IMG and try to get things like that going in different parts of the state. But right now, in, in my experience is, is the principal, and in my case, it's the superintendent, whoever's running that plant. And it would be great if things were the way they were. We'd like for them to be and nobody would come in one day and say, we'd like to go in another direction. And you say, well, there you go. I mean, we're winning, we're doing pretty dang good. What direction you want to go in? There's only one way to go. But anyway, that's, that's, that's it. The person behind the principal's desk gets to make that call ultimately. The superintendent or the school board can't fire you in North Carolina without the principal's permission. I mean, that, and that, that's North Carolina school law. And I, I won't tell you why I know that law, but I do. And anyway, fellas, you guys have hit on some big points. But again, it's, it's the voice of the person that sits on the board that can sit there when that group of 13 meets and present what is best for our state for football. I mean, you know, and, and, and how it can fit in with other sports. You know, the one thing you did say, Kennedy, I mean, I want every sport of any school, high school library present. I want everything about it to be first class. I want my kids to go there, you know? That, that, that's a, that's a key point to me when I see a coach or a teacher and they won't bring their kid to school where they work. You know, they don't believe in that school enough to bring their kids in to get an education. And to me, it's teaching all these children and, and, trying to handle them like they're our own. They're our own kids when they're with us, you know? And all of you feel that way. If not, you'd go get a job and actually make some money and, and get on with your life. But, you know, that's the bottom line is, is making a program that those kids will enjoy and it'll enhance. All those things are ideal. But, you know, up here where I'm working now, Hickory's been playing football since 1923. And, and these, this place up here is unusual. Deanna knows what I'm talking about in Starmount. And the community still comes to the football games in places like this. People 60, 70, even 80 years old, they come to your basketball and your football games. It's, I really, it kind of surprised me a little bit because I've been in Fayetteville for a long time. And that's certainly not the case there. So anyway, you guys, I guess we gotta go to the NCHSAA board meetings and try to vote for people with, with football backgrounds to get a bunch of those on there. And that's about the only way you're gonna get the real movement that, that everybody is seeking right now. You know, it's, North Carolina is a, it's one of those states that's caught in, in, in the southern conundrum. People want to grow and they, and to grow, you have to get a lot more folks to come to your area. But they also want things to say exactly how they've always been. I got my cut here. I want to keep it. And, and, you know, every school, every area, every town goes through that at one time or another. Now, where you are as a coach, when that area is going through it, that's gonna kind of determine your success. But I'll be frank with you. I've, I've had people call me in the office and tell me that if I didn't win so many, I could keep rocking and rolling. So as far as I'm concerned, I want to work for a guy like that. I want it to be that important to that principal, you know? I got the job here and, and the superintendent said, you know, Coach, if this thing doesn't work out, this, this probably won't be good for me. And I said, well, Dr. Adele, I take it I have your full support then. And, and I have had it. And it's been a great experience. And in about two months, you're gonna see a very much improved program here. So God bless. If we could just play the game and get away from this kind of crap, I think we'd all be happier. So I've, I've, you know, it, it's great to see people like Deanna and Mark. And, you know, we, we've, we've stared at each other across these places for a long time. And, you know, Chris Hughes will always be the guy that I made play Tika's pedigree one-on-one.
Well, Deana, I see you've got your hand up. I'd certainly like to get your thoughts. You kind of be quiet out here.
I agree with Coach Tinsley and Coach Robinson. What's the, what would hurt taking the idea from Virginia? Because geographically, they're kind of like North Carolina. They, they have a very in the southwestern part of Virginia. They're very remote, kind of like our mountains, western North Carolina. And so I, I don't, I don't understand why we can't look at other solutions from other states. If Virginia's did that for years, you know, why can't we kind of look at that and get some new ideas? So it, it's just crazy, crazy.
Comment that my friend Nate Wimberly over at WBTV put, Coach Tinsley has hit it right on the head. Look at states around you and learn, stop spitballing the situation and get a plan that works. It shouldn't be this hard period. Very smart man, Nate Wimberly. Appreciate his input. Guys, we're running really long. We're at about an hour and 45 minutes. So definitely want to cut this short here eventually. But I want to give any of you other guys just a chance to say anything. You've been incredible tonight. I appreciate all the, the input and just wanted to throw it out there. Coach Holcomb, I see you got your hand up.
Yeah, I guess the, just the, the, the next question is, you know, I, I'm not, you know, where I'm at 3A wise, I'm not, my conference is not a bad conference with the realignment and all that stuff. I do have an issue obviously with the, the, the playoffs being just, you know, four. And, and you know, there's a lot of thought and discussion of that. But I guess my question would be, you know, where do we need to go? How do we need to attack this from, you know, and I, I don't, attack is not the right word, I guess. But, you know, how do we need to address these issues with us? You know, that are coming up? Do we need to, are these things we need to go to the, the board with? Because obviously we can't ask for amendments to be, you know, discussed because they just finished their, their meeting. You know, so it won't be put on there till, again, next year to talk about. And by next year, we'll already be one year into a four-year realignment is what it looks like now. So I, I, I guess the question is, you know, we, we've had a lot of great discussions, not a lot of great points. You know, what, what's the next step? I mean, what do we need to do?
Very, very, very good point. Any, any response to that? Any, any thoughts? Any recourse? Any ideas?
We've only been working on this about 40 years, if it makes y'all feel any better.
Um, I, I had an opportunity to just look at the association's appeal process with this. So I, I've already put in my mind that there are gonna be changes. So we just have to wait for the changes to come after people put it, have their say. And, you know, just, I guess being a military guy, sometimes you just have to hurry up and wait on situations. So.
Yep. Good point. Coach Connor, it looked like you wanted to make a comment.
Well, Chris, the only thing I want to say was, look, after hearing everybody speak, there's just, you can tell there's a ton of intelligent people that have great ideas. And, you know, you just hope that as, as we get to make something change and that we have the right people to help make those decisions that are really invested in this thing. Not, not looking at from the outside with separate agendas, but, but people that have everything invested in this for everybody. Because there's a lot of intelligent people that can really help with this.
Yeah, I agree. And you know, the one thing that I want to implore that, and, and I think this has been the underlying thing. But I, I still think that, you know, a lot of coaches have their schools' best interest at heart and we all want what's best for the state. But I think you gotta remember the kid is the, the number one person we need to look out for. It's just the kids and it's playing. And, and you know, the kids that are my age are gonna be playing sometime here in the next few years. So, you know, those have to always be the top priority in anything that, that's looked upon. Deana, I always try to give you the final word, but if anybody else wants to hop in there before we close up shop, here, here's your chance.
Just wanna, Coach Stone, I've known him for a long time. So Coach Stone, looky here.
Yeah, yeah. I used to write in the margins and I'd go all over.
That's a lot of work.
I know.
Got it done. Several of your buddies are probably on that cover. So.
I got Weatherman here with me now. He says he's.
Yeah, yeah. So, but I, I've been, I've enjoyed hearing all the ideas and, and everything. And I think that's, that's the, one of the biggest issues is getting everybody together to talk from, from the top to the, to the bottom, you know? Administrators, coaches. I know with the pandemic this year has been really hard and limited, you know, people actually getting together and meet and stuff. So hopefully this is gonna change and, and people will get together and have some new ideas and, and hopefully for the betterment of the kids. That's all it is. It's all about the kids.
I agree. Well, guys, I appreciate it. We're gonna go ahead and wrap this up for tonight. I'm gonna play the music to, to end the broadcast and get us out here. Any of you guys want to stick around after the music plays and we'll chat a little bit longer? That's fine. I'll be here. You know, I'm always good for talking football and sports. But I just want to thank each of you for your time coming on here. Coach Holcomb, I see your message. I'll get that for you when we get off of here. And appreciate all the support for Deana and myself here at NC Preps and all the guys that help us out. And if we can do anything for you, you know how to get in touch with us. And, and, and just, I think being in our hearts, I mean, you know, again, for the kids and we just want what's best for the state, you know? I'm not out here trying to make enemies or trying to make people mad. But sometimes you do have to grease things up and, and shake some trees to make something happen. And I feel like that's what we're trying to do. But for Deana, myself, everybody that, that was a part of it, all the coaches, we appreciate you tonight. I'm gonna play the music and end the show. But if you guys want to stick around, we'll be here. I'm going to play the music and end the show, but if you guys want to stick around, we'll be here too. But y'all have Russell.
Everybody.
Thanks, buddy. We'll be around. Appreciate y'all.